We'll call the City Council's Special Meeting to order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselperson, I go Anjali.
Present.
Vining.
Here.
Janine.
Here.
Lamore.
Here.
Felder.
Here.
Whitman.
Excused.
Mayor Clark.
Here. And we have the Special Mean, Mr. Bastu. We start with the ARPA item, if you would.
Your Honor, Mr. Ed Sella, who is the finance director for the presentation, kind of gives counsel over eligible expenses with the ARPA funds that the parties are receiving.
Okay, good evening, Mayor and Council. I do have a presentation here, hopefully not too long, but just going to get right into it. So the city of Monroe is scheduled to receive eleven point four million dollars in ARPA funds, American Rescue Plan Act funds. Will we receive those in two separate payments? They call them, they like to call them tranches for some reason. But we will receive the, we've already received the first one, five point seven, seven million dollars was received in May of two thousand twenty-one. And we should receive the second payment next May, two thousand twenty-two. These are federal funds, so of course they do come with requirements as, and eligibility requirements, basically in terms of how we can spend them. And there are procedures we needed to follow when we do spend them in terms of procurement and allowable spending and things like that. And we'll go through a few of those items, but mainly what I'm going to talk about tonight is what sets the requirements? And then what, what are, what is allowable to be spent under the act? So the law was enacted on March tenth, and at that point, we had a pretty basic legislative language that said you can spend the money on these things, but it wasn't very specific. And, and basically what they did is they said, Department of Treasury, you have sixty days to get out this, the rules for what this money can be spent on and how it can be spent. So out of that, the department, the Federal Department of Treasury issued an interim final rule. And it's interim because it's, it was under the, an expedited rulemaking process. And they were going to still be taking comments about those rules for another sixty days after that rule was issued. It is guidance that can be relied on. It is authoritative. So I mean, if we would have expended funds after May tenth on something covered in that rule, it would have been considered an allowable expenditure. But they're getting a lot of comments on, on the interim rule. And for example, from the National League of Cities, from the Government Finance Officers Association. And there will be a final rule after, and I'm not sure yet, haven't been able to find out when that final rule will come out. But let's hope that there'll be some additional flexibility put into the law that could even make funds available for additional purposes as well. So that's where we're at now. The, the final rule is about a hundred and thirty, or the interim rule is about a hundred and thirty plus pages. It's not too hard to read, but a lot of it is kind of explaining, this is why we did this, and this is why the money is available. If you could just put in there what, what the money could be spent on, it would be much shorter. But since the interim final rule was issued, there have been a number of frequently asked questions that the Department of Treasury has responded to as well. Last time they did that was on July fourteenth, so those can be relied on as well for additional ideas and guidance on what the funds can be spent on. And, and one of them actually covers a project that, that we may want to do with our funds. So I got that a little later on in the presentation here. And there's a, if you're interested in going on their website, which I have a link later on in the presentation to show you how to get there. But there is a fact sheet, an eight-page fact sheet that just generally explains, explains the program as well. So this is language directly out of the legislation in section six oh two and six oh, six oh three of the act. There's basically four categories where the money can be spent. And you don't have to spend the money in every category. You can spend it in one category if you wanted to. You didn't have to spend any of the money. But these are the four specific areas where the, the money can be spent, and it's up to the city to decide which area to spend it in. The first one is to respond to the public health emergency or the negative economic impacts of the emergency. And you can see some of the descriptions there of some parts that they put in the act as to where they could be used. They'll go into a little bit more of the details here in a second. The second area is for premium pay for essential workers. Basically, it's essential workers performing essential work during the pandemic. The third category is, is revenue loss. That's what I call revenue loss. But basically, it, to the extent that the city had a revenue loss as determined by the act, which we'll get into in a little bit here. Those funds calculated for revenue loss can be used on, not just to replace the revenue that was lost. It's, it, it actually is to be used for services in the future versus just putting the money in the bank and replacing what you potentially lost. And the last category, and actually the easiest category for the most part, is to make necessary investments in water, sewer, or broadband infrastructure. So unless otherwise noted, and there is a couple of spots in the presentation here where that's noted. But for the most part, the funds can be spent between March third of this year through December thirty-first of two thousand twenty-four. One caveat there is that the costs have to be sort of, can be sort of incur or encumbered or contracted by December thirty-first, twenty-four. But the funds have to be fully spent and sent out by the end of two thousand twenty-six. So really you have about almost five years to spend the funds. The funds cannot be spent on pension deposits. And for the most part, although there are some exceptions, they can't be used as non-federal match on other federal programs. I think there was some FEMA programs where they could actually be used as federal ma, non-federal match. Okay, so the, just this, I kind of listed these already, but these again are the four main categories of where you can spend the money. COVID nineteen or negative economic impact, premium pay for eligible workers. You can use it on government services to the extent that there was a loss of revenue. And then investments in the infrastructure categories there. So category one is, is for COVID nineteen or negative economic impact. So you can, you can use it to, for cost to containing the, the virus or mitigating the effects of the virus. You can use, if you had a behavioral healthcare needs, you could set up a program like that. You can use it for payroll and benefits for public health and safety, human services, or similar employees. But they, those employees need to be primarily dedicated to the COVID nineteen response. Can't just pick up public safety, for example, doing road patrol or something like that that can pay for them. They have to be dedicated to the COVID nineteen response. Some negative economic impacts might, are, these are things that were listed right in the act. If, if we had negative economic, economic impacts for the tourism, travel, or hospitality industries, you could, could help to support those industries. If we had, the second item is rebuilding public sector capacity to pre-pandemic levels. If we had reduced staffing due to the pandemic, we could use these funds to increase staffing back to those levels they were prior to the pandemic. You can use it for small business support if there are negative economic impacts there that, that can be identified. And then there's hardest-hit communities. It talks a lot about that in the act, low-income areas. You know, if there is, if the, there is negative economic impacts of the virus that are in those low-income communities, such as socioeconomic disparities, housing-type issues, or disparities in education, you can develop programs to deal with those as well. And then this first item here is, there talks in the, in the interim final rule about areas that are in a qualified census tract, which for us, if you look at the Michigan Department of Treasury's map of those areas, it's, it's primarily from Kentucky, Tucky Avenue to the east, south of the river. And then also between Telegraph Road and Monroe Street, south of the river. And in those areas, if you develop a program to deal with some of the negative impacts of the virus, it's basically given automatic approval. There's like no real eligibility issues that you're going to have to deal with. So that's, that's the benefit of doing a program in those qualified census tract areas. And the key point with this section is, is that, is there at the bottom, is that eligible uses under this category have to be in response to the disease itself or the harmful consequences of the economic disruption resulting from or exacerbated by the COVID nineteen public health emergency. Category two is for premium pay for eligible workers. And it talks about eligible workers, so it's premium pay for eligible workers doing eligible work. So eligible workers is pretty easy for us because in the definitions to the act, it defines local government employees as eligible workers. So that, that's not an issue. But we would have, if we want to pay premium pay to our employees, we, they have to be doing eligible work under the act. It's work that maintains the continuity of operations of critical, critical infrastructure or critical to protecting the health and well-being of communities. Generally, way it defines it in the interim rule is it's work involving regular in-person interactions or regular physical handling of items handled by others. So if you can meet those, those definitions, then the employee can be considered doing essential work. Some additional information, this is one of the areas where you can go back prior to March of two thousand twenty-one. So you can use the money retroactively back to the beginning of the pandemic. Employees of the jurisdiction can, additional employees of the jurisdiction can be designated by the executive as essential. They just kind of have to be somehow justified as critical to protecting the health and well-being of residents. So that's, that's, there is a possibility there of the executive making that definition. Because in the, in the interim rule itself, it does list certain employees, but then it comes in and says, well, the executive can designate additional employees if, if the executive would like to. It does have, one of the things we would have to do, because this is federal funds, if, if the payments we were to make to our employees for premium pay would cause them to exceed a hundred fifty percent of the Bureau of Labor Statistics, statistics average for our area, we would have to do a written justification as to why we were making those payments. We haven't calculated yet. I guess I did some initial investigation whether we were there, and I don't think we are. But that's one thing we would have to document when we do, do start paying, or assuming we do start paying premium pay to our workers. You can pay up to thirteen dollars an hour, and the additional cannot exceed twenty-five thousand dollars per worker. We also can provide it to private employers if the city wanted to, under an agreement with private employers that had essential workers and wanted to provide the funds to those essential workers, we could do that through an agree, through me a cre, an agreement. Some workers that are examples there are at food production facilities, grocery stores, and others that I have listed there as well. And category three is the one I've been having the most fun with, is the for government services to the extent of the loss of revenue. So this one is, you know, I think whenever we first heard that you could use it for loss of revenue, everybody thought, well, let's just compare last year to this year for revenue sharing, for example, and we lost a hundred thousand dollars there. Well, we can cover that revenue loss. In the end, well, the way the Department of Treasury created the formula was it's kind of based on total revenue across your organization with certain items excluded, and then also projected forward to the twelve thirty-one. So it's kind of a strange calculation, but once you, once you figure out what's not included in revenue, it's just a pretty simple mathematical equation to do. It just takes a little while to, to get it put in place. But like I said, it's based on total revenue instead of line item by line item. And you compare your revenue back to the first full fiscal year prior to the pandemic. So for us, that would be June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen. But it's, they, the Department of Treasury wants it calculated as of December thirty-first, so then there's, you have to project that revenue forward. And it's not just a one-time calculation, so we'll calculate it the first time as of twelve thirty-one, twenty. But every December thirty-first, for the four years after that, we'll also calculate it. So where we may have had the revenue loss the first year, we can calculate the second, third, and fourth years to see if we had any revenue loss in those years as well that qualify here. The requirement here is, this is one of the more open sections of the act, is that the funds just need to be used on future services and costs that provide direct services to the citizens. And I've got some examples of what that could be that were listed in the act coming up here. But it is one of the more open areas of, of the eligibility allowances. So this is a rough idea of what the calculation is. So, you know, the, the first thing you do is determine your base year revenue. And so I've gone through and I've calculated, determined all our line items. But in, for example, no federal revenue or federal revenue passed through the state gets included in the calculation. So you kind of have to say, okay, this is our total June thirtieth nineteen revenue, but these things aren't included in the calculation. So you back all those out to get sort of an adjusted June thirtieth, thirtieth nineteen revenue. And it requires you to go in and determine a growth adjustment as well. Because you're, we're going to take that June thirtieth nineteen revenue and say, okay, if it was going to grow to twelve thirty-one, twenty, this is how much it would have grown. The act allows you to use four point one percent, but, but I've gone and calculated around and come up with a higher percentage than that. And I'll come up to that in a second. And once you have that growth adjustment, then you take that June thirtieth nineteen revenue, and you basically project it forward at twelve thirty-one, twenty to give you your counterfactual revenue. And then you have to calculate what your actual twelve thirty-one, twenty revenue using the same revenue categories. And the difference between those is what your revenue loss is going to be. And so for the city, this is our calculation right here. The base year revenue as of June thirtieth nineteen was that forty point seven million dollar number at the top. And it was rolled forward eighteen months to twelve thirty-one, twenty at what I calculated our growth adjustment factor as is six point two eight percent. Those numbers calculated together give you that forty-five, forty-four point five million dollar number is what the projected revenue would have expected to have been. And then what I've calculated our actual revenue as, as of twelve thirty-one, twenty was that thirty-eight point four million dollar number. So the revenue loss under that calculation for the city is six point one seven five million. And that's how much of our eleven point four million dollars we would be able to spend in the first year in the revenue loss category. So that, that's a good chunk of it. It gives us a lot of flexibility. Some, and non-exclusive is used a lot throughout the interim final rule because it, it's a rule. But, you know, you can be creative and, and come up with things that fit into these categories that they haven't listed in the rule. But these are some of the items that were there. So maintenance or Pago-funded building of infrastructure, including roads, modernization of cybersecurity, park improvements. You can't make debt payments. You can't pay judgments or settlements, and you can't just put the money in your rainy day fund or, or reserve fund. But the main idea behind this category is it has to provide direct services to the citizens of the city of Monroe. And last category is investments in water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. So this is also fairly easy. The, the, they have to be necessary investments designed to provide an adequate minimum level of service that are unlikely to be made using private sources of funds. The eligibility really is tied to the EPA's programs, the Clean Water Revolving Fund and the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund. So if their programs that those two, or projects that those two programs would allow you to do, then they can be covered under these, these funds. But there's a couple bullets there and that, straight out of the act, that tell you what those, they're saying those types of projects are. You can do water lines, replacement of lead service lines, investment in wastewater infrastructure projects, and also stormwater projects. Right out of the act again, it says recipients retain substantial flexibility to identify those infrastructure investments that are the highest priority for their communities. And this is a question right out of the frequently asked questions because it was, you know, we've been talking about doing a stormwater project. And the question was, okay, well, can we do the roads at the same time? And the Federal Department of Treasury actually answered that question with this response to their frequently asked questions on July fourteenth. It essentially says that if, if you're doing a, a, one of these infrastructure projects and it, you know, substantially requires the roads to be removed or, or repaired or replaced, then you can use funds from this category to replace those roads at the same time. So that was good news to see out of that question response. And then also there's broad, you can do broadband infrastructure. So we're talking about, here you're really talking about putting infrastructure in place that allows citizens to get reliable, speedy internet access that they may not have today. It needs to provide adequate speeds. And under the act, and I guess it, it needs to be provided to unserved and underserved areas as well. That's, so you got to have the speed, and it's got to be an unserved or underserved area. So in the act at this, and I should say, this is one area where I think there may be some adjustment by the Department of Treasury when the final rules come out. Because a lot of people thought that unserved and underserved, you can see, was defined as twenty-five megabytes per second download and three megabits, mega, excuse me, megabits per second upload. And that was a lot of, a lot of people thought that was too low. That was just, that was not considered, you know, adequate at this point. So that could be an adjustment we need. But the act requires if you're going to do in, infrastructure, it, it needs to provide at least a hundred megabits per second download and, or, and a hundred megabits per second upload speeds, unless there's other things that cause you not to be able to do that, such as topography, geography, or cost. And in category one that we talked about, in terms of the negative effect, economic impacts, that it can be used to assist households to support internet access or digital, digital literacy as an eligible use under that category. So I mean, you could come up with a program to help pay for internet access if, if the speed that was being provided already was adequate. There are some reporting requirements to come along with this, so there's an interim report due at the end of this month, and then every quarter. So I'll have to report what our expenditures are by category at summary level are at the end of this quarter, which right now is zero, so that should be easy. But then there's a quarterly report due starting October thirty-first, and for each quarter thereafter, that needs financial information, contracts over fifty thousand, and generally information about utilization of the funds. And then there'll be a annual report as well due at the same time. So there, that's how they're sort of keeping track of us and making sure we're complying with the use of the funds, basically. These are some guidelines from the GFOA, just to keep in mind as we're deciding how to spend the funds, that take care not to create new programs that we can't support after the ARP funds are used. These are most likely one-time funds, so, and unless we know of a revenue source that can replace the federal funds when, when those are gone, we need to be careful of that. Use of ARPA funds to cover operating deficits is, should be considered temporary. They, they say that investment in critical infrastructure is a good use of these funds because they are normally one-time investments, and you don't have to worry about long-term costs coming back. But they do remind you to look at, okay, if you're going to do an infrastructure project, what are the operating costs that you're going to take on related to those? And I guess these next few items are really kind of linked together. And there are so much federal funds out there right now in terms of what can be done by different agencies. It's just kind of, sign of, kind of a warning to not do a program that may already be covered by another agency's federal funds. MCOP has, for example, a lot of additional federal funds for rental assistance. So the recommendation there would be, well, the city probably shouldn't do rental assistance because MCOP's already got the money for that. So it's just a, kind of that kind of recommendation is to be aware of what your partners in the area, including the state, are doing with their funds so that we don't duplicate efforts and spend the funds unnecessarily. And I guess just the last item there is just take time to figure out what you want to do. I mean, we have four years to obligate the funds, and then another two years to actually expend the funds, so we have time to figure this out. So we have time to wait for additional rules to come out and see what additional flexibilities might come out as well. But we can get started. We have five point seven million now, and then we can move on when we get the next five point seven million. This is the link, if you're interested in reading any of that information, it's the link to the Federal Department of Treasury's web link to the Federal Department of Treasury's website, and that's where you'd find the frequently asked questions and the interim rule and, and the other documents I mentioned. And so that's the end of the presentation. It's open for questions or discussion. And no, I don't guarantee that I'm an expert on this because there's a lot of information, but I'll do the best I can.
Pierce was quite a bit there. And, I mean, I just might, might try and take all that in. I'm sure we're going to have discussion time just now, but in the future, I see. Andrew, you had a question? I'll work back this one. Or did you?
I got about four. You give me as much time.
We'll just work our way back.
All right. I, I was gonna have a question in the beginning. Does the revenue need to be COVID-related? Does the revenue loss need to be COVID-related to be eligible for reimbursement? And the answer to that sounds like no, which means that it would, all the DTE revenue loss then would be affected. So over the next four years, our eligibility is going to far outpace our allotment. So we're not going to be able to dump everything in that category even if we tried, right? That is my understanding of what the presentation was.
Yeah, that, that would be a good assumption of what's going to happen. Property taxes are included in the calculation, so, you know, because DT, our revenue's going to be flat or declining. That should be what happens, we should see revenue losses the next four years under the calculation they have in place. But like I said, they are, a lot of, lot of communities question whether they could do the calculation based on their fiscal year ends versus doing the December 31st number or time period. So I, I expect there was going to be changes to that rule, but can't, won't know until we get there.
Okay. A question on whether you can reimburse yourself for costs already incurred. For example, it, it sounded like you can make retroactive payments up to a certain date, back to a certain date, back of March of 2019, was it?
No, March of 21.
March of 21?
Yeah.
So for example, any, any pandemic expenses that were incurred before that date cannot be reimbursed?
Correct. Yeah, I mean, it's, this is from March 21 for the only category I know right now that you can go further back than that is on the premium pay. You could pay people for service prior to March 21.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking of, was the pandemic pool that the city set aside for our employees to make sure that they were taken care of. Would that be a reimbursable expense or no?
When you say pandemic pool, you mean, what do you mean by that?
The, the two weeks time off we gave city employees as relates to pandemic leave, the pandemic leave time bank?
Well, are you thinking we've already paid them for that? Is that what you're thinking?
By and large, I think the answer to that is yes. At this point, it would be reimbursed.
We've let them use the leave, but for the most part, other than contractually, we allowed them to take one week and get paid for it last year. We haven't paid anybody for it yet. So they, if they needed to use the leave, they were allowed to use that. But I, I don't think that would get, that would be covered under the premium pay section at this point.
Fair enough. And then just finally, are we, are we precluded? Maybe a question for the attorney, are we precluded as a, as a Michigan local government from making investments in public broadband? I thought there was some rules that restricted us from.
Or not. No. City of Mar, at least one city I know, the city of Marshall has a pretty, I think Cold Water has one too, but they, they both have broadband networks.
Traverse City does too. Okay. Maybe I'm making something up. All right, thank you.
Brian, you have a comment or question?
No, I do. Just, you talk about possibly opening up further avenues to spend the expenditure. Do you think they may constrain some of the ways of doing it or?
It's just my opinion, but no, I think the idea behind it was to give us as much flexibility as possible. And my guess is if anything, they'll open it up more. I, I don't think they will go outside of those four categories, but within those categories, I think they may open it up a little bit more.
Talk about broadband, would that include like the, the, was it the T-lines? Is that what I'm thinking of that they're bringing through?
It, it, it wants, the act, the interim rule points you towards putting in fiber optic networks is what it does. And so it really wants, that's probably what you would need to do if you were to install any type of broadband infrastructure, would have to be a fiber optic type network. We don't own the, the electric or telephone poles in the city, so it becomes a little, we have to work with those agencies to get on their poles to do it. So it gets, gets a little bit harder that way, but that's, that's essentially what it would mean.
Thank you.
Michelle?
So if a company paid their employees hazard pay back in 2019, does that get deducted from, if they were to apply for hazard pay now? Does that get raised out?
No.
They could double dip?
Well, they could pay it going forward. I mean, they could do a couple of things, you know, let's, the city paid hazard pay. So, you know, it says in the act you can pay up to $13 an hour or $25,000. So if we decided, hey, we, we paid our police and firefighters $1,000 for hazard pay last year, that wasn't enough, we can go back and pay them another $1,000 if we wanted to. So you can, can go back and do that if, if we would like to.
All right, thank you.
Let's see if there's any, this way, John?
Yeah. I don't have any particular questions that about you, well, one question about your presentation. There's no, there's no guidelines relative to how much interest you can make on the.
We're not getting much, but no, there's not.
Okay, so there, there's no, no, no regulation?
No, that was one of the questions that they answered early on, is that you can earn interest on it and it, it's not interest, it has to be returned to the federal government's. Ours to really to use as more of a general revenue type item.
I guess the, the comment I have, and I've discussed this with, with the city manager, is that with these funds, we need to be strategic because the, for a couple of reasons. The first one is that the, the state of Michigan is getting their fair share of the ARPA money, and they may direct that into pots that we have accessibility to other grants like water, sewer, and road. Secondly, it's, people are pretty confident that the infrastructure bill is going to go through at the federal level. And that's going to be a trillion dollars, and that's going into road, broadband, water, sewer. So we really need to be strategic on where we spend this money and, so we can leverage other, other pots of funds that are going to be available to state and federal government level. And then, you know, my other discussion I've had with the manager is personally, I think the funds that we do use need to go into quality of life projects, projects that the city would not normally do because of funding restrictions, but projects that will affect the quality of life for the next 15 or 20 years. Because this is like a once in a lifetime gift from the federal government, 11 and a half million dollars.
Yeah, I think the big word thrown out around there is transformative.
Transformative projects.
Yes.
So.
All right.
Kelly, I'll have Thomas.
I have a question, but I do like the idea of maybe being able to help some of the small businesses who were impacted by the pandemic. So I think we should consider what we can do. I don't know what the business development corporation, if they are entitled to any of this type of funding or, but I think that'd be a good thing to look into.
Yeah, I mean, you gotta remember the county has a lot of money too.
Lot of money.
So, you know, between them and us, we gotta work together to make sure we're doing the right things and working together on it, I guess. But, but yeah, I guess, I mean, when it comes to small business, you gotta be able to show what the negative economic impacts were on them and develop a program around that, basically.
So I, just a couple of comments. I think John kind of hit on conversations we've had about what is, what is transformative in defining that? And then the, the value or the amount of revenue that's available through, whether it be the infrastructure, coming from the state. I know Mr. Cochran is always pursuing items that we might have some revenues in our development around the national park and the corridor plans. The list goes on. And it's really about timing. So it's, in one respect, I think about is how quickly we might have to act. On the other hand, when you see the timeframes, we don't have to. So we have opportunities to, to, to kind of vet through those other funding programs before we make a decision. And it may be something we make a decision to find out that the infrastructure project's going to cover it and we qualify and able to get to revenue. And then what's the second item? So there's going to be a lot of conversation for council on what's, what's the prioritization, kind of, whether it's quality of life issues, whether it's another item. And I think you touched on a comment I was going to make that Kelly asked about was there, there's opportunities, if I'm not mistaken, somewhere in this about partnerships and, and pooling or sharing. And I, when I think about the, the small business and a countywide perspective, how does that, where, where are all the, those that may be receiving can put in to make that, that big impact, whether it be small business, broadband, or whatever it might be? There's going to be a lot of conversation here that has to occur, but there's, you know, the, one thing I was going to ask was, was in there was on the slide and, and some of the early sessions that I, were in Zoom meetings, they talked about, it kind of goes a little bit of the quality of life issues on parks, but I saw something in one of your slides that said parks were. Is that existing versus new?
Could be, I mean, it could be improvements to park or it could be a new park.
It was, I, I just remember that one of the questions asked was about parks and trails and, and the person that was, of course, that was early on, said, no, it wouldn't qualify. But from what slide you have in there, it sounds like it, it could be or, or is.
Yeah, under the revenue loss section, you know, those funds just need to be spent on service or on items that provide direct services to citizens. So, you know, and all citizens can use a park, all citizens can use a trail, use a road, so all those things would qualify.
And here, as we all know, and many of the residents know, we, we've put together the parks plan. We have a long-term plan for all of our parks. Well, I shouldn't say all, I think there were six or seven that were prioritized, and then there's those that follow behind. And there's the larger, larger cost items as well. We, we've completed one at Labor Park and, and we're already doing the, the work designed for Father Carnes, Carnes Park. And I know there's others that fall behind those. And, and so I think about that in relation to the, you know, if it's, I'll take Mill Race Park. If there's a DNR trust fund grant available, then we probably wouldn't spend these revenues on that if we know we can qualify and have the match money for that, because that would sit right in line with that type of, of a park. And it's probably not the biggest improvement park for the amenities, but it is a significant improvement in the community and access to the river. So it's, it, so it makes you think then, so the costs and associated to all these because you have to have the personnel to do it. And we know that we are struggled to get many things through, not because of effort, the effort is there, but it's just the volume that is there. Did I see a slide in there, something about contracting? And is that usable for the?
For like, what type of costs? Do you mean like engineering costs, architectural?
Anything, I just, I saw, I don't remember the slide, I just remember saw something, maybe it's related to pandemic, not to overall.
Yeah, I mean, I think you can use the, the funds on, if, you know, if the project qualifies on one of the, under one of the categories, then you can use the cost for, you know, preliminary design and, and engineering costs as well, so, yeah.
Well, that's helpful because I think the, the staff we have, have and all the hard work they do and the volume of things they have to address, it's going to take additional staff. And it's not a matter of lining up and hiring people because what comes with that is more personnel, more, you know, full-time pensions, those type of things. If we can utilize those resources to have the right relationship and to be able to accelerate maybe, whatever the other may be, parks or whatever, that just comes to mind always because I think of quality of life, and there's other quality of life issues as well.
Yes, we just want to make sure we're definitely doing the project because if, you know, you design it with the funds and send it out to bid and then comes, the bids come back and you decide you're not going to do it, then we, the city probably would end up picking up those design costs because there's no project at that point.
I, I agree, there's got to be a conclusion and, and a completed project. So I'm just, I'm sure all the councils heads are going the same way, think about all the possibilities, but I think it's going to be really timelining to other funds available and timelines to these, which it was nice that is time to make those decisions years out, not just months out.
Yeah. Yeah, I know that's probably the next step, right? It's at some point to talk about what projects we have in mind.
Okay, let's see if there's other questions or follow-ups from council. Andrew?
I think Councilman Michael Angeli was, what made a critically important point when he said that we needed to be strategic and be thoughtful about how we're going to spend these funds and ensure that there's not other sources to be able to do the same things that we're trying to do, because I think that a lot of these things, we're only going to have a crack at one time. You know, the, the end of the year is coming. I know that we do a goals and objective session, given the length of how, how long some of these projects might be, I think that we need to incorporate and, and ensure that the next goals and objective session that council has is, you know, it takes into account some of the funding sources that we have available and some of the projects that we might not have had an opportunity to do before, you know, given the constraints that are present, but, you know, might be open to us now. So I think it was a wonderful point for you and him to make, yeah.
Yeah, I guess about that, we, you know, we have a significant infrastructure project that the administration's moved forward with us and, and why that becomes a priority. And, and is that something that, because it has, we are looking to go for. We have, through our five-year capital improvement project, you can look out, but the, is that an item that is best done or best weighted because of the funding? But the idea is we still have to make the service to the community and have to make those necessary items improved so we don't have other problems with water and flooding and things like that. So I think that's where we'll look to the administration and say, yeah, you could wait, but here's, here's the issue and then, you know, move forward.
Yeah.
Okay, right. Unless there's any other, Mr. Pasto, if there's anything further from you?
No, nothing with that topic. I'm sorry, nothing with that topic.
Okay, John?
Make a motion that we go into closed executive session for the purpose of attorney-client privilege, correspondence, land acquisition, and labor negotiations.
Second motion by Councilman Michelangelo supported by Councilman Lemoore to go into closed executive session for the reasons stated. Clerk, please call the law.
Benjali?
Yes.
Fining?
Yes.
Germaine?
Yes.
Lemoore?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes. So I know we have guests here this evening, so this special meeting, part of it was a closed session, we're going to be departing, but the regular meeting will start at 7:30 and we'll be back for that, and that's our other agenda item.